I would call to order this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee at 6:01 PM. Do notice having been posted pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether received or unreceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We do a roll call of members present. Ms. Ferrera.
Present.
Ms. Ashley.
Present.
Ms. Corville.
Present.
Mr. Pasternak.
Present.
Ms. Solomon.
Present.
Also with us this evening, our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Schoonover, our Chief Financial Officer, Rachel Pellerin, our Director of Curriculum and Teaching, our Director of Special Education, Meg Ashton, and our Recording Secretary, Robin Bacar. Do you need to open?
Yep. Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting of the Somerset School Committee to order at 6:02. Do notice have been posted. Pursuant to the meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether received or unreceived, as you can see, the meeting is being recorded and are acknowledged and deemed permissible. Roll call. Mr. Gore.
Present.
Ms. Ashley.
Present.
Ms. Corville.
Present.
Mr. Ventura.
Present.
And the Chair, Victor Misha, is present. At this time, and Ms. Andrews already acknowledged the administration, at this time, if you could all please rise for the pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice from.
I'll just note that the next regular scheduled meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee will be held on Tuesday, December 16, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School library.
Okay. Today is a bittersweet day for all of us. Our first item is a citation for Mr. Agia, who's retiring after 57 years of service. At the meeting of the Somerset School Committee and the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee on November 18, 2025, a citation was prepared, signed by the members of the committees, and voted and subscribed in the permanent records. In recognition of the extraordinary 57 years of dedicated service to the students and families of our community, we proudly honor William Agia for his unparalleled commitment to education and public service. Throughout his distinguished career, Bill has served as a teacher, guidance counselor, a director of the Somerset Berkeley Community School, summer school, and kids' summer learning program, shaping countless lives with a steady leadership, compassion, unwavering belief in the potential of every student. A true community leader, Bill has also devoted many years to the town of Somerset as its recreation director, enriching the lives of residents of all ages through programs and fostering connections, wellness, and community pride. A lifelong resident of Somerset, Bill loves his hometown, has every, has been evident in every role that he's embraced. His tireless advocacy for students, his deep sense of responsibility to the community, and his steadfast commitment to public service stands as a model for all who follow. With profound appreciation, we extend our gratitude to William Agia for the years of exemplary service and everlasting legacy he leaves in the districts of the town of Somerset. We wish him every joy, fulfillment, and with well-deserved retirement. As you can see, this is a very, this was difficult to read because I remember in May of, I think it was May 13th, 2006, I was at WOW Gym, and I had just been elected. And one of the first people in the community that came out to say, hey, I want to teach you the school committee budget, that was Ms. Agia in the gym. And he was explaining things to watch as a long, because he was always caring about the students, as we just read, but also the taxpayers. I consider Bill a friend. I'm always amazed how, Bill is actually the definition of no child left behind. No matter if you're unable to make it to graduation for his evening students because the student has to work, well, I would hate to be that person, that student's employer on the other line, because he was calling them, that student needs to be here for graduation. If you didn't show up to class, you're going to get a phone call from here. He really cares about all the children that went through those horrors. And it doesn't even stop there. It's, you know, when you walk outside during the spring, you see tulips outside in the front. I could go on and on about Mr. Agia, but I know other people will have things to say. So it is very bittersweet for us today to say goodbye in his capacity as an employee, but he will still be around for many years to come. So with that, I will yield to the other chair.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. I have not known that Mr. Agia has gone as some of the people here, but I have to say, one of the first impressions I ever had of him was attending the evening school graduation. And I was always so impressed at how well he knew his students. It is the most individualized, personal graduation that I've ever had the pleasure of attending, and how obviously deeply he goes for his students. And after I went to the first one, I couldn't miss one after that, because it was, it might have been a small ceremony, but I think it was one of the most impactful in that as a tribute to the work that you have done for all these many years with all of these students. So we are so fortunate to have had you here, just really to serve our kids and our families. And we hope that you have an amazing retirement, but I have a feeling we'll be seeing you around. So I don't know if anyone else wants to say a few words. I know we have presents for you, and I suspect there might be some other folks who want to offer congratulations as well, so.
Well, I'll jump in if that's okay. So, Mr. Agia, you were guidance counselor at the old Somerset High School when General Burge was a student there. And you know what's interesting? I don't necessarily even remember who my guidance counselor was, but I remember you. So you're the one who had an impact on me, a long-lasting impact, and I think that speaks volumes. I think, thinking about 57 years, all the generations of families who you've supported through this school district is amazing, and we're very fortunate to have you for as many years as we did, and you'll be sorely missed. You're a legend here, so I'm not sure what it's going to be like without you, but somehow we'll have to get through it. But thank you for everything. Why don't you come on down and get your flowers?
May I say? I would too. So I would say about 10 or so years ago, I approached Mr. Agia about a summer program. First, the community college had a pretty successful program at the time where a lot of our younger students would go there in the summer. We were sending high school kids to Stone Hill for their project in temporary competitiveness program. And I asked Mr. Agia, we just had a conversation, like, what do you think? Can we do this? And he said, we'll do it, and we'll do it better than anyone else. And that was really it. I just had a, from a simple conversation, he just took the ball, ran with it, and created this very successful summer program, which gets several hundred kids every summer, Mr. Agia?
Yes.
And that's just one thing, but, you know, from what Mr. Machado said, what you said, we hear it every year at graduation, he just wants his philosophy, he told me before, just take a student from here and get them here, just move them forward. And he's relentless with getting kids moving forward and ultimately getting that diploma in their hands. And I don't know how many years, how many kids over the years, and adults, that he's actually been able to get that high school diploma, which, if it wasn't for him and his program that he had created, that wouldn't have happened. And then, just to remark, 57 years, I would say, Mr. Agia, when you probably started teaching, 28 years was probably around the amount of time that someone could put in to get their full retirement, right? I think 28 is probably the magic number. He's done that twice. It's just, it's unimaginable for someone to work 57 years in this business, which it takes a lot of commitment, takes a lot of energy and passion. So for all the kids who have benefited from knowing Mr. Agia over the years, I just want to express my sincere and deep thanks to you.
You have to say it, you're like, Mr. Ray. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to call on Mr. Schoonover. There's a reason why we give a bell, is because being an educator.
George, I always say, educators, we live our lives by bells, right? They tell us everything about where to go, when to be there, and so on. So in retirement, may that be the only bell that's left.
My wife will make good use of that. Thank you. Thank you so much. George, want to take a picture, maybe all the school committee members? Do you all want to join? Oh. So the bell says it all. William, Bill, Agia. 57 years shaping futures, futures. Teachers, leader, friend, Somerset, Somerset Berkeley. Thank you so much. How's that? All right, so now we're going to, oh, wait a minute. This is a surprise. You want to wrap that box up and take a photo?
I want to thank everyone for your kind words, but I also want you to know that the continued success and growth of the community school programs is not because of any one individual. Over the years, there've been so many people in so many different roles that have contributed to the success of these programs. In addition, I want to say that oftentimes, the smooth operation of a school and my programs at night depend upon the people who do the most humblest of jobs. That would be the custodians in this building, both day and night, both past and present, and the people who've done the menial jobs in my office over the years. Without their help and success, none of this would have been possible. I've also had the honor and the privilege of working with many good teachers over the years, and I've had the privilege of hiring many good teachers over the years. But whenever I had an opening and I was looking for a new teacher, I always had the bottom of a teacher in mind. Not a good teacher, but an outstanding teacher. This teacher was the most dedicated, the most hardworking, and the most student-oriented teacher I ever met. She was also referred to as a gifted teacher, and I personally saw the effort she put in to become a gifted teacher, and she certainly was. But over the last 50-plus years, her most difficult job has been married to me. And that would be my wife, Barbara Bellino, who taught French in this system for 35 years. She was truly the reason behind all this success, because without her support and devotion and many sacrifices, none of this would have happened. I also want to thank the school committee members, both past and present, for their continued support of all these programs. And I also want to make a special thank you to our Superintendent, Mr. Jeffrey Schoonover, for his continued support and undying belief in what we were trying to accomplish. And all the other people, and all these students, which I didn't expect, they're supposed to be a class of all state, you know what I mean? And I didn't expect any of this, and I certainly appreciate this, and all my staff, friends in the past. There were just so many good people who contributed to this, and I'm sure they will continue on doing a good job with our superintendents' guidance. Again, thank you so much.
Want to table the rest of the agenda? On behalf of the region, I would entertain a motion to adopt the citation for Mr. Agia as prepared. Second, motion by Ms. Ferrera, seconded by Ms. Ashley. I'll do anything on the session here in my office, please.
Aye.
On behalf of the Somerset School Committee, I make a motion, I will entertain a motion to adopt the citation that we prepared for tonight's meeting and record it in our permanent records. We have a motion made by Mr. Gore, seconded by Ms. Ashley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next item on the agenda is public input. Do you have any public input at this time?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda in a new business is the recognition of Jason Morente as Food Services Manager for 10 years.
Is Jason here? Jason, I saw him over there.
He's hiding it.
I'm going to miss you. I hope you got a short ride, huh?
Yes, I do. 38 minutes out of an hour 15, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Nice work.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Well, Jason, I remember when you first came in here, you know, 10 years ago, and one of the things that you and your team, Erin, actually, she's here as well, you were determined to improve our cafeteria food, the program as a whole, our capital, our staff, education, professional development, and all of that. And I, in 10 years, I've seen what I thought was a program that was in danger to the program that it is today. And what I do like, and all the things that I've seen, is how student-focused you were. You grabbed that mentality of our leadership, how it's all about students, how you would survey, how you bring fun items into the cafeteria, and how you actually advocated for students to actually give them their input. So I think it's a great loss for our district to have you moved to Norwood, or to Norwood. I think it's a great gain for them. I do remember speaking to Erin about you leaving, and she shared her thoughts about you as well, and I just want you to know, I'm excited about your new role. I think you're going to excel in it, but it's again, it's another bittersweet day for us, because knowing that you're leaving. But I believe you set a foundation that the next director will be able to take it forward. So you left us in a much better place than where we were, and that's always what we can ask of you or anyone else. So to that, I say kudos and many years of luck in your new role. Any other?
I just wanted to share that, a little anecdote. My son came home one day and he said he decided he liked Alfredo sauce. I've been trying to get him to like Alfredo sauce for a long time, because I love Alfredo. And all of a sudden, he liked it, and I said, it was, and he goes, you know, we had it at school, and it was so great. I'm like, awesome, this is wonderful, like, well, I'm going to make some Alfredo sauce. And I made, like, from scratch, I, you know, worked and I served it, and he just sort of, it's just like, I'm like, what's the matter? He's like, honestly, Mom? It's not as good as school. And I'm like, okay, fair enough. So I don't know what is in the Alfredo sauce, but if I get the recipe, that would be great in Andrew's house. Because mine does not compare. But in all seriousness, I think one of the things that was great to see is that the way folks rallied in food service, especially around COVID, and then how we went from, you know, everyone gets free lunch, and I think what's so amazing to me is how many kids enjoy school lunch now, and not just because it's free, but because it's delicious and it's fun, and they get to explore different cultures. And, you know, when you present to us at school committee, I think we hear from our kids that that's actually true, and that's really how it is, and that's really great, because, you know, it's an important part of their day, and we just really appreciate all the work you do, even though, put my cooking machine, if that's okay. So thank you for everything you've done through your team.
Really, it's just, with what you said, Mr. Machado, 10, 11 years ago, came into a food service program that was struggling, and really, it doesn't even look anything, doesn't resemble anything that we had back then. What you've done has just been absolutely incredible, and it's not just the quality of the food and, you know, trying to get kids more involved, but then the staff that you also built and knowing that we have someone here who's stepping up into the assistant director role from within, and one of your, someone you hired and mentored along the way. It's just, you know, I can't say enough about the positive impact you've had, the entire food service program, the Somerset High School.
I think all your staff's going to miss you greatly, because I know every year when your contract would come up, I don't think I would ever see as many emails and support renewal that we would get for you, and it's just a testament that how much they appreciate your work and for you, and they appreciate what you treat them. So we are going to miss you for sure, but I, looking at the names that we're placing, I think they're going to do a great job to.
Well, I just want to say thank you. You know, none of that would have been, you know, possible, you know, like Mr. Agia said, and a legend, by the way. It's a lot of years and, you know, but it wouldn't be possible without the support, right? We have, you know, people, Mr. Schoonover's been here since the beginning, Robyn's been here from the beginning, Machado's been here from the beginning, Liz has been here from the beginning, you know, Doreen O'Gara's been there from the beginning, and, you know, our middle school, Carrie Martell, has stepped up to the assistant manager a long time with us. So it's all been possible because of the people around me. I'm just lucky that we all came together at the same time 11 years ago, where we had a team, and we saw we can be better here, right? And we worked every day for it, and we walked in every day and we took it day by day, operation by operation, and our goal was to, and my goal was to, the first day I walked in here was to leave the place better than I found it, like you said. You know, we took a really strategic look at business. Lindsay Alverenz, the one I had my first interview with, you know, she brought me in. Ron Terra would mold me a different person. I know I'm leaving, just like, the business is in a better place, I'm leaving a better person because of this community. I really got to develop a lot of relationships, and I'll never forget it. You know, my kids have seen photos of how they grew up with me working here, and it's just been an unbelievable experience, and, you know, I'll always be proud of the time I've had in Somerset, in Somerset Berkeley Regional High School. So it's all you guys, all the support that I had to make me do what we did here, and like I said, Doreen O'Gara, Christine Mascarelli, all the workers that I've got to work with have been unbelievable, even the ones that have retired. It's funny you said something about someone that I hired. We had a little meeting when I left on my last day to introduce Carl and Carrie, and we were talking, and I go, I looked at the room, and I'm like, I've hired everybody in here. I'm like, everybody in this room I've actually brought in, except for one, Doreen O'Gara, which is 32 years, so I couldn't talk that, she's been here for a while. So I just want to say thank you for your support as the boards that really gave us the opportunity to do what we want, share our vision, never said no, said go for it, make it better, be better. So, you know, the school committees have always been at our back, and even, you know, Mr. Pierce was, first time I went to a meeting or a meeting in the building, I saw him, and he asked me about homemade baked muffins, you know? So even he pushed me hard back then, so I just want to thank you guys, and this place will always have a special place in my heart, and I wouldn't be the person I am today without this place, so thank you.
Would it make sense, Jason, maybe you can't leave just yet, would it make sense for you to help us with the next item up on the agenda? So just, the next item on the agenda is to introduce the new Chartwell's Food Service Manager, Carl Peterson, and Assistant Food Service Manager, Carrie Martell. Come on down, say hello.
And Erin, do you want to come down too?
So this is Mr. Carl Peterson. He'll be taking over the director's role. I always, what was I introducing you as? Bigger and better me? He's going to come in, I have no doubt that he's going to keep the ship going, going with you, Mike. This is Carrie Martell. I've been on the verge of working with you for nine years. She came in as a part-time worker, worked her way up to manager, really has crushed her role. Very excited for her development, which, and the steadfast Ms. Erin Long, who is probably the most important person in my career, she is not going anywhere, and she'll make sure that these two stay in line for you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all you do for our fans.
And just one thing, as we heavily said to Jason, throughout the years, you may see many things happening in here. Obviously, one, you provide more food in this school than any other restaurant does. You can provide more dishes than any other restaurant will serve in any other capacity. But we're here to help you, guide you. If there's anything that you need, please let Erin know, please let Mr. Schoonover know, and we're here to be sure. And once again, we're, our goal to you is when we leave here, that you think it's a better place, the way you're finding it. It's going to be difficult with Jason, but I think you are, you know, I know the process was long and deep, you know, oriented, student-focused, and so we love that, and congratulations, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
All right, our next item is pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, American Federation, State, County, and Municipal Workers, ASME, Administrative Assistants and Custodians, and also the Teachers, Somerset Teachers Association, we will not, the Somerset K.A. will not be returning to open session. So with that, I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion made by Ms. Ashley, seconded by Mr. Gore. It wasn't Mr. Gore, right?
Who was Gore?
Oh, it's Gore. Okay. By roll call, Ms. Ashley?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Corvill?
Aye.
Mr. Gore?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. American Federation, State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME, Administrative Assistants and Custodians, and the Somerset Teachers Association, and the Regional School Committee will return to open session.
Second. Motion by Ms. Ferrera, and seconded by Ms. Ashley. On roll call, Ms. Ferrera?
Aye.
Ms. Ashley?
Aye.
Ms. Corvill?
Aye.
Mr. Pasternak?
Aye.
Ms. Solomon?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.